While I'm at it, should we talk about the museum?
That's what I was thinking.
Sure. And I can answer that if you have a question.
Okay.
What's the question?[11.12][11.12](Laughter).
One hundred and nineteen thousand, six eighty-six, and there for two thousand thirteen.
Let me start by saying that I don't know why the total amount is in there, so I will defer to Tom on that number, but would like to say that in terms of the general fund and general operating, I've been speaking with Lorraine Campbell and Ward Randle who have told me that if they do not receive a subsidy, if you will, a general fund subsidy, that they will be unsustainable beginning fiscal year two thousand thirteen. And Lorraine is in the audience, she can expound on that further. I had made a recommendation in a letter to council on April twelfth, talking about the use of fund allowance and the recommendation not to, with the exception of adding a department that was deemed unsustainable, and at that point, if the funding was not that great, keep sustainability. In other words, is the funding somewhat less than it was when that department was part of the city? And if the answer was yes, it's not that great, it was less than it was when it was part of the city, then I would recommend a subsidy, if you will, of seventy-five thousand dollars a year for a year. Now, what's in the budget, I believe, and Tom, correctly if I'm wrong, is fifty thousand dollars a year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I don't know the answer to why it says one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars.
Oh, because there's more than...I can answer that.
Okay.[105.32][105.32](Laughter).
Because we still have building and maintenance costs, whether it's open or not, and grounds. Building and grounds are also in there.
So, look, walk me through, so...
Sure.
Forty-two thousand is for the building, seventy-six for the grounds, and that's money that we'll need to pay regardless.
That's correct, yes. And again, building that is fifty thousand to help them sustain, but most of it is building and grounds.
The, in addition to, where is the fifty thousand planned?
Are you looking at the...
I'm looking at page forty-five.
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 At the bottom.
Very good. Yes. So, again, I believe the fifty thousand is built into the grounds budget. So, if you look at the buildings budget, that's, you know, that is just the building maintenance, and again, we brought that down by about eight thousand dollars. If you go down to museum grounds, because that's where it was typically allocated in two thousand eleven, if you look at the two thousand eleven amount, if you look at two thousand, sixty-five thousand, if you look at two thousand twelve, the only budget is sixteen thousand. So, again, we're anticipating an appropriation of fifty thousand for two thousand twelve to keep them operating, and budgeting a fifty thousand on that line item for two thousand thirteen. We have made, we have not made the appropriation, keep in mind, it's just an estimate.
So, the twenty-five thousand, or take the seventy-five thousand, is it, am I missing something, or it equals seventy-five thousand over three years?
It was, my recommendation was to inject seventy-five thousand dollars a year of general operating funding for the museum. However, it works out from an accounting perspective, looking at museum grounds, maintenance, and upkeep, I left essentially up to Mr. Miller, Mr. Darlene, and Mrs. Campbell to further explain that. But, again, from a policy perspective, it was if we had a high holding cost for all of these buildings, it made sense to be able to have staffing and programming to showcase those buildings to our youth and the general public. But, again, if there's a discomfort in terms of what the actual numbers are, I would need to defer to Tom and Mark and Lorraine.
So, is that seventy-five thousand shown under, is that included in that one ninety?
If you're looking at building and grounds...
Yes.
And you're looking at the two thousand thirteen budget column...
Yes, sir.
And the amount of seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars?
Mm-hmm.
That includes fifty thousand for operations. Not just, not just the grounds, but to, as a subsidy to keep the historic village open.
So, we don't have to do anything, it's already...
Well, again, I have fifty thousand budgeted. I think the request is for seventy-five thousand.
Okay.
Twenty-five thousand decision.
So, one nineteen plus twenty-five?
Plus twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay. Well, if I could start at the last council meeting, I propose bringing back Lorraine Campbell for the city, and I have spoken to her and other people since then, and they would prefer to get the additional twenty-five thousand as opposed to do that. So, I'm here today to say that I support adding twenty-five thousand to the museum. Just wait to hear whatever is left to say tonight.
Would that be in the form of a resolution?
Well, I can't take a resolution, but what I can take is a consensus. So, that, you know, if I get people not around the table, that it's a good idea, you all have input, and I can count to four. If I hear four people say it's a good idea, then I will put it in the budget. If I don't, then I won't.
And I see many people here from the museum, so if we could speak about that and resolve that, it probably would help whoever's here tonight.
Okay. Appreciate what you're saying, Councilman Slater, but I'm not ready to do that tonight. There are other entities in this city that we are not funding either, and I think we have to look at the total picture. We have to get through this budget process. To sit here tonight and say, oh, we're going to look at you in isolation from everything else that has to occur, I'm not ready to do that yet, because I know the other people are going to be lining up to do this. I understand there's a sunk cost, there's a fixed cost anyway, whether you operate or not, but I think the city, I know the city had an agreement, in writing, to what we were going to do, and I think to this point, we certainly lived up to that obligation. The problem is, you've not been able to secure funding, and I know it's a difficult environment out there for any nonprofit. I think that's what you're up against, you're just not able to secure additional funding. But, I encourage you to keep trying, but at this point, I'm not ready to give the nod tonight. I'm not saying that I want, but not until we get through this budget.
Mayor Proten, I guess?
I would be in support of doing this, and I think that it's probably important to note now that it's, we're not necessarily asking to add a position back within the city. I think really the goal is still, and I want to speak for anyone that's put in all the hard work since we've made the transition, but obviously, it was a big change, and we were kind of hoping and praying that with the amount that we were able to support the museum at that time, which was literally all we could afford, we were hopeful that that would be kind of startup money, so that they could get going with a new organizational structure. And I think that that's still what the hope is, and they're still looking to build those partnerships, but without anything to leverage, it's next to impossible to do that. And I think that they've shown us in the last year that they're willing to do the work, that there are people in the community that wholeheartedly support it and have put a ton of effort in. I think if it's twenty-five thousand dollars is the difference that they're asking us for, so they can continue to do that and be successful in kind of transitioning to a new form of service delivery, I would absolutely do that. So, I think with the amount of money in question, I know we're not done looking at the budget. I know we'll have to approve, or not approve it, in its entirety, but I think based on what we see here today, I would be willing to support that additional twenty-five thousand dollars above and beyond what's here in the budget.
In the agreement that we signed, did we say that we're going to authorize fifty thousand dollars a year?
No, we didn't.
For capital, we did.
For capital.
We're talking general operating, right? We dedicate fifty thousand dollars here for capital to maintain the buildings.
Right, but for general operating?
Except for initial startup costs, which we...
Which was one time.
Drop, yeah.
I'm not ready to sign off on that. We're looking at a hundred and, I can't do the percentage in my head, but it would be five hundred percent increase. My opinion is, it's a question of viability, and if, running a nonprofit is a difficult thing, and certainly it's a difficult environment to run a nonprofit, but I think getting into business of subsidizing is, isn't a place we want to be, and I think there are a lot of priorities that we've been unable to, unable to support as much as we'd like, and I think when it comes to community values, I think, you know, safety and those things are at the front of the line, and I'm concerned that, you know, we're putting the cart before the horse. I'm after taking a review of what police budget has gone through, the amount of furlough hours that we have right now. The city manager is very fond, saying, very accurate of saying that we have no full-time employees right now, and it's difficult for me to say, let's take on a new obligation if indeed we can't have full-time employees. And we need, we need to support those that are already with us, and so that's kind of where my head's at at the moment.
I'm kind of in that camp as well, but we're already maintaining a bunch of the buildings there, and it's going to cost us ongoing to keep those from falling apart and becoming nothing. And I think it would be, I toured that, as I mentioned in the last meeting, just a couple of weeks ago, for the first time in my entire life, and it is kind of a spectacular place to go and learn and remember, you know, what Troy's all about. But, that said, again, we have had so many budget issues in the last couple of years, obviously, that's why we're taking so much time to kind of go through all this stuff. To Doug's point, you know, is it fair and, to Mr. Fleming's point, is it fair to subsidize one when you know there's going to be others standing in line to get more subsidies as well? So, you know, a little bit torn on top of it.
I think Mayor Proten McGinnis's point was well taken, in that they're just starting out this new process of taking over the management and the funding, and, again, to close the museum down would then require reopening costs if the, you know, the budget improves, if our revenues improve, or we've not given them an adequate amount of time to be able to adjust to this new model. So, I'm kind of thinking that it's a small amount of money to pay, in a sense, for something that could have some long-term benefit, and if we close it down, we've got some long-term costs.
Since you can count to four, I guess here we go. I think it's something that the city needs, it's a great attribute for the city. Twenty-five thousand dollars at the end of the day is not going to break Troy. I think that's a good investment to keep it open, and it's part of the quality of life in the city. I think it's up there, we should keep opening and getting the funding that they need.
I think we need to be clear, though, it's a seventy-five thousand dollar.
One hundred and nineteen thousand.
It's a seventy-five thousand dollar operation, and I think it's a British saying, pennies add up to pounds, and that's, you know, we can say, and that's fair, and that's a fair argument, but that's my ongoing concern, because pennies do, pennies do add up to feet pounds, so...
The fifty thousand, that's building maintenance, isn't that upkeep?
No.
Was that, Mr. Miller?
Well, to clarify one of the questions... Yeah, no matter, we have budgeted fifty thousand for the operating, so in the budget that you have right now, okay, to make it seventy-five thousand would require an additional twenty-five thousand. So, again, Councilman Teetz is correct, basically, we're looking at seventy-five thousand to, for, to keep that thing staffed, to keep it operating, okay? Again, in your budget, there's fifty thousand, just out of some of the preliminary discussions that were made, so that's already incorporated in what we have. So, it's a kind of a twenty-five thousand dollar decision for this year, but again, as Councilman Teetz pointed out, it's a seventy-five thousand dollar cost.
To clarify, over and above the contractual obligation, we're asking for seventy-five thousand more dollars a year, so if you were to be mined to not subsidize the museum, we would actually reduce the budget by another fifty thousand dollars, unless you're telling me that fifty thousand is okay, and we're talking about the twenty-five thousand additional, that's a different conversation. But, just so that we're all talking the same language, I think that Mr. Teetz is correct, we're talking about seventy-five thousand a year. Fifty thousand's in the budget, but...
Correct.
But, the whole amount is what's at issue.
Right.
Can you walk us through the math again, because I can't, somehow I can't get the seventy-five, about one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars?
I think between Tom and, or Mark?
Right.
It's not seventy-five, it's fifty.
It's fifty. It's fifty that we're asking, but it's in there already.
It's in there, so an additional twenty-five.
I think if you took a look essentially, and if you want to do it differently, Mark, go ahead, because it's your area. But, if you take a look at this coming fiscal year, what are obligations? It's essentially building maintenance, isn't it?
Well, our contractual obligation, which is not shown in this area, is a capital expense of fifty thousand dollars in maintaining the buildings. And then, Public Works is responsible to maintain the grounds. Is that not right, correct?
Yeah, much of that.
Do you know off the top of your head, how much?
No, I don't know what that figure is, but, you know, we have an obligation to go over and collect garbage on a daily basis, and to contractually take care of snow removal, lawn mowing, and other activities that generally people do for their own homes, you know. So, you put it in that perspective, that's what those funds are used for.
And then, there's fifty thousand dollars built into this budget, which is for basically a subsidy for operations of the museum. And then, a further question is another twenty-five thousand dollars on top of it.
But, I think if you take a look at it, maybe even on a simpler basis, your holding costs and then your operational costs, because, again, from my perspective, as a conservative fiscal manager, the issue became one of, we have holding costs, close to seventy thousand dollars a year, and no one can walk through the door if they're economically unsustainable. So, what would it take to become economically sustainable? And I received that number essentially from Mrs. Campbell and Mr. Randle. I know that we've, we used to subsidize many other 501(c)(3)'s, the Boys and Girls Club, Troy Assistance, always say. None of them came to me and said they're going to be unsustainable. I mean, Lorraine is much more articulate than I am in terms of the reasons why we could not get the donors that we thought we could, because of what's happening with the Detroit Institute of Arts and other venues. And we could certainly talk about that, but when you get right down to it, you're going to spend about seventy thousand dollars a year to keep the museum from falling apart, what do you want to spend to keep it open? And that's, you know, as Mr. Teetz said, you know, it's a community value decision, and the council makes those decisions, I know.
At this point, I'd like to know more about what steps have been taken. To me, the community speaks through their pocketbook, and when you have a nonprofit, I would like to know what steps have been taken. I know in our agreement with the organization, we agreed to audit, I don't know if that audit's been conducted, or, you know, I think those are important things for us to mute right now, or to have as a, to understand or make that decision.
Can I ask Lorraine Campbell to make some comments, because I think she has most of the answers. If she doesn't, we'll get them, right? Claudia?
Thank you very much. First of all, we understand that we completely looked at our business model, at where we make money at the museum, what our revenue streams are, how we could increase those, hold down our costs, and take areas that, where we are working at a loss, and turn those into positive revenue streams. The best thing we do is teach. The best thing we do is provide educational programs. So, our revenues in fiscal twenty, eleven, and twelve are anticipated at between eighty thousand, three hundred dollars and eighty-five thousand dollars. We are reaching a regional audience of three counties. On average, we reach twenty-five school districts a year at a snapshot. They are not always the same school districts. When I did a five-year look, we are touching over fifty school districts in southeastern Michigan. About forty percent of the children who come through the museum are from Troy, but a significant portion of our revenue is coming from additional districts. Our revenue from school districts this year is twenty-seven percent higher than the revenues generated in two thousand nine-ten, which was the last time the programs were provided five days a week. Now, we are, we had a period of time in the, in the two thousand nine-ten school year when we were only able to provide school programming three days a week, because my staff was eliminated, and the Historical Society budgeted funds to take over the education programs, but they could only do that three days a week. We are now providing programs five days a week, whenever a school district wants them. We also generate revenue through facilities rentals, whether it's weddings, receptions, business meetings. We've started doing employee gatherings and picnics. We've started doing private parties. Our facilities rental income has gone up fifty-seven percent since two thousand nine-ten. It's not as high as we want it, but the numbers are going in the right direction. We all know that full-on profits, the most significant area of revenue should be private giving, and people give to people. We have raised eighteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars from unrestricted donations in the last year. That represents a significant increase. Those revenues are higher than we anticipated. Where we are running short, to be honest with you, is revenue from grants. We are in the second year of a Kresge Foundation grant that was awarded originally when I was working for the City of Troy. It was a two-year grant, twenty thousand dollars a year for two years. The balance of those funds have been transferred to the Historical Society, thank you, and we will be applying for another operations grant from Kresge this spring. However, we do not know the award levels yet, and we don't know the grant guidelines. I anticipate receiving those in the next two weeks. Keep in mind that, as Mr. Zurich mentioned, there is tremendous competition for arts and humanities dollars in southeastern Michigan right now. We are charter members of the Cultural Alliance of Southeast Michigan, which is a one hundred and eighty-member organization of arts and cultures groups throughout the seven-county area. On Wednesday, we will hear from representatives from the Detroit Science Center, who have to generate five million dollars before they can open their doors again, from Michigan Opera Theater, which has to generate eleven million dollars by the end of May to cover their debt service, from the DIA, which is struggling to get a millage on the ballot in November so that they can keep their doors open. We are competing with those organizations for the trickle of grant dollars that comes down through the end. We do have a development person who we have budgeted for through some of the seed money that you provided us, that has been combing the foundation market. We continue to apply for grants. We are also looking increasingly for sponsorships, which is unrestricted money donated to help support specific programs. Just this afternoon, I met with a small business owner who is interested in supporting one of our public programs that reaches middle age to senior adults, because that's her target market in her business. We are also very pleased that the traffic jam, the car show, is going to go on again in August. Mr. Kerlik has increased his support for that venture, and we're delighted with that, and we're looking to increase sponsorship levels. So, we are working, in a nutshell, to improve our revenue streams in every area of our business model, but it takes time, and what we've realized is that we can't accomplish it in twelve short months. It will take longer. And we also realize, working in the strained organizational structure that we have right now, that we need to infuse some money into better marketing, so that we can more effectively reach our target markets, whether they're schools, or families, or businesses, to hold their events at the museum, to increase awareness at the museum, and to also remind people that the village is still open. Because we had a good year and a half period where the discussions at council table and council chambers wondered if our facility was going to be open, and there are people who still walk through the door and say, I thought they closed you. So, we need to push aggressively in an awareness campaign that helps the region recognize that this community has this gem, that it is open, it is vibrant, and it is improving and expanding its services. We also need to remind that we have a bit of, I wouldn't call it, we've stretched our donors, because in two thousand nine, the city and the Historical Society had a gift agreement over the Niles Barnard House. The Historical Society had accepted donations over a five-year period toward moving that structure. Mr. Randle stood in this chamber and said, we have a contract with our donors, we cannot divert that money to another purpose. In other words, we can't shift restricted funds donated to preserve the Niles Barnard House to general historic village operations. And so, we had to work to generate the rest of the revenue, to move that house, get it on its new foundation at the village, and get it in a button-down fashion until we get through this transition, and then can raise additional funds to restore it. That took an incredible amount of energy and financial commitment, and it strained some donation dollars that might have come for general operations. So, in the last year and a half, the Historical Society has gone from a group dedicated to preserving history to being business and financial managers with employees, with a responsibility to restore a building to the tune of a half a million dollars, and to become business-oriented in their business model. I think they have done a tremendous job. Our volunteers have stepped up to the plate, but to be very honest with you, we have a number of volunteers who are working thirty-five hours a week. That is unsustainable itself. You know the track record of the Troy Historical Society. Some of you have been in this community long enough to know that when they have said they're going to do something, they do it. They're saying to you, we can still do it, but we need a little bit of support here. We need a small infusion of capital so that we can fine-tune our business model and get it where it needs to go. So, that is very best for you tonight. If any of you, like Mr. Henderson, would like to see the village in operation, would like to, as I say, have the Dollar Fifty Tour, I would be glad to do that, and partner it with a sit-down discussion with those board members, if you want to look at their numbers. They are working very, very hard, and I'm proud to work with them. We want to continue that effort. And I appreciate Mr. Slater's kind words, but as I said to them, or said to him, with your agreement with the city requires them to have a full-time director, requires them to maintain public hours of operation as they were in two thousand nine-ten. They're exceeding the hours of operation, they are maintaining me as a full-time professional staff, as well as a number of part-time employees. They are doing their level best, and will continue to do so, and I think can thrive with your support. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
If I can just ask one more question about the budget. Fifty thousand is already baked in, that's what we've proposed, you're asking for another twenty-five, is that...
That's correct.
That's correct.
But, again, because it's over and above the contractual amount, even if I didn't want, even, well, manage the question until it's passed, but even if we didn't want an additional twenty-five thousand, I would have brought up the additional fifty thousand, because it goes out over... because it goes out over and above the contractual amount.
Okay. And is this an amount in perpetuity, or does this end every year and we have to reassess whether or not we're going to give this? As they start to develop, you know, let's say, two years into it, there's more funding available for them, can we back off on the?
The proposal is for a three-year budget. And so next year, we'll look at the third year again.
What is the actual total budget?
The budget, excuse me, that the Historical Society approved was three hundred and ninety thousand?
Budget.
That's our budget, correct.
The city's con, I think, if I may, a better question, I think, is that during the high point of the museum, when it was totally a city department funded by taxpayer general fund monies, I believe our budget contribution for the operation of the museum was in the area of about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Is that correct?
In, in one year, sir, it exceeded five hundred thousand by hair, which is why we qualified for the forty thousand dollar Kresge grant.
And so, taking that trend of thought a little bit further, we at one time spent about a half a million dollars for a museum historic village with full-time staff, for about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of city infusions. You get something similar to that. If you don't get the infusion of the extra seventy-five thousand dollars, you're still paying seventy thousand dollars essentially for, just to maintain cement building. That was the reasoning, and that was the distinction in my mind between subsidizing Museum Village Green and not the other five oh-one C3s, because they will be sustainable. That said, I'd like Lorraine to talk about the relationship, or future relationship, that she would have with the OEC based on, OEC being the Outdoor Education Center, if the council were to agree to subsidize the museum.
The similarity between the nature center and the historic village is they both represent capital assets to the community. There are, there's land, there are buildings, and in terms of the village, there are collections. We have, we house over, somewhere between nine and ten thousand items in our collections. That's in addition to the buildings that you see. They include archival documents, photographs, a textile collection, glass, ceramic, wood tools, so a very valuable collection that has been accumulated over the past forty-five years. So there are those assets. The nature center and the village are similar in that we both also aspire to provide programming as one of our key products. We had a very positive meeting with representatives from the Troy Nature Society, who are working hard to maintain programming levels at the nature center. The nature center grounds are open, I understand, now pretty much twenty-four-seven, because the gates are not closed. So people can walk the trails in a level of services to provide it to the community, but they do not have a requirement to provide a minimum level of public hours in their building, as, buildings as we do. And for the village to be open to the public, staff must be there. We can't have people walking in and out of these historic buildings without supervision. We met with them. We have agreed that there are many places in our operational models where we have similar needs and goals, and where we can potentially partner, collaborate, or form a strategic alliance. We can look at purchasing services together to get a higher-quality service at a better price. We can look at our programming structure so that we are not in competition at key times of the year, like during holidays, and also so that we might be able to provide more attractive programs that are in some ways linked together. So we have agreed to meet at least twice a year, and possibly those people who are providing programming to meet more frequently than that, so that, if you will, we can build a better product that attracts a better audience, drives the revenue to both facilities, and increases it, so that we can both be more sustainable.
In keeping with Councilman Henderson's line of reasoning, couldn't we have an amended budget if, in fact, your, your revenue increases and we can see that less of a contribution from the city is needed?
Well, certainly, and the Historical Society is required by their agreement to provide you with a full annual report, so we will have one prepared for you. It would, it should arrive to you probably between July and August, because we have amended our fiscal year to coincide with yours. So at the end of our fiscal year, we will automatically generate an annual report that will be provided to you as, as a report to council. Certainly, that report can be reviewed next year when you're doing your budget projections, and we'd be glad to bring you up interim, you know, documentation as we go through the year. Our goal is to be sustainable. Our goal is to have a business model that is programmatically, I say, and fiscally sustainable, because that's really what nonprofits aspire to do.
Councilman Slater?
One comment on the budget. We have to do this again next year, the exact same thing, so you can change, next year you can change it again, so that, that wouldn't be an issue. And I thought we had four votes, unless somebody's changing their mind.
I think, I think we need to develop this out, because this is one of the few significant issues, and I think it's fair to hear this.
Oh, I'm all for this.
Yeah.
If we still have the four, I'd like to address with Mr. Darling, it, it's confusing to me the way this is broken down, okay? Because last year, we budgeted almost fifty-seven thousand dollars for the building. This year, we're proposing forty-two-nine. We budgeted sixteen thousand for the grounds last year. This year, we're, we're factoring in the fifty with the grounds. It just seems to me there ought to be a separate line item for operations, or if you want to, is it possible to use the outreach, outreach extension service?
I'd have to look into that, but again, yeah, what I tried to do was be consistent to that first fifty thousand dollar drop that we gave them when they opened up, and that's where it was budgeted and recorded at, with some of the museum grounds.
It just seems to me that we ought to have a separate line item in case we decide, if we approve it, and then next year we decide that we're, they can do better than one fifty, maybe we can reduce our seventy-five, maybe we can reduce seventy-five to fifty or to twenty-five, but.
Absolutely.
I just, you know, from my personal perspective, to shut this thing down July of this year, and it just doesn't make any sense to me. It just, you know, the mayor hit on it. It's going to cost more money if you want to start this thing back up at some other point. It just, it just seems like, let's give them another year to, to give us a good go. They've been working very, very hard. You know, I don't want to, I don't want to minimize the amount here, but to me, it's, it's worth it to add this on and give them another year, and then we'll revisit it next year. So I would just like to see a different line item from my perspective.
You mean like holding costs and operational costs, essentially, something like that?
Yeah, something, something to differentiate.
Have that specifically spelled out, so the next year we look at it, we just don't forget, and it's not just absorbed in, and say, "Okay, what is that?"
To me, it's confusing to, I think we were all confused, and that's just.
And then Lorraine indicated that they wouldn't close July first, but they would begin to, to shut down.
Well, we, those of you who know members of the Troy Historical Society know they're a pretty tenacious bunch, and, and they don't say no, and they don't say quit easily. We do not intend to close on the first of July of this year. Our treasurer has worked harder than just about anybody I know, and he said, "Look, we, we have, we started out with a fund balance. The Historical Society had assets that they brought into the July one, twenty-eleven. They are absorbing a deficit this year with those assets, but they have sunk everything that they have, all of their assets. They've turned all of their, their focus of their organization to keeping the historic village open. They will continue to creep away at the edges of their fund balance through this coming fiscal year. Depending on how deep they have to, to cut into that reserve, depending on how good a job we do, continuing to increase our revenues through effective marketing and program development, depending on what kind of grants and sponsorships we have, we will know probably three-quarters of the way through the year if we are at that point where we say we can't go any farther, or we're, we're solid. What we're hoping is that you will see that an infusion now will make our position at this time next year one of sustainability. Before we get to the point where we're coming to you saying, "We're going to close the door in three months, we're ready to hand back your letter of agreement," and then, as some of you have indicated, then you have the liability of a four-acre campus with eleven historic buildings that are deteriorating, that are unguarded by people, that are sitting in a residential and prominent commercial intersection, not doing anything. That's what we all want to avoid. So our request is by infusing some funds now, we can put those to the strategies that we've, we've designed to get us on an upward projection.
Commissioner Zerling?
I'd like to mention too, because there's, there's four essentially neophytes at the, at this session, I'm required by charter to submit a budget document, but it's not a taken-or-leaved document, and this is a very healthy discussion that you're having. I can count to four, I'd rather count to seven, and, you know, there's other options for solutions here. The immediate solution is first year of seventy-five thousand dollars. From our perspective, subsequent years have different options. So it would be great to have a seven oh budget adoption per se, you know, for the entire document. The first step is concurrent sign on what you do here.
You said, you said your budget is three ninety?
Hmm?
And without the seventy-five, it'd be three fifteen, or are you?
That's, that's this year's current budget. The, the society right now is, they will write their budget for twenty, twelve, thirteen going forward, just as you're doing, that they will present their draft budget to their board next month. That's their, this year's budget, if you will, eleven, twelve.
Would the budget be smaller, larger? I mean, I guess.
It certainly is, Mr. Lavender, do you want to comment?
I, I don't expect it, it may be somewhat smaller. Our, our expenses year-to-date were running less than budget, so, and so, and we're, revenue were running much less than budget, so the overall budget may be somewhat smaller next year. But on, and we need to, we need to spend some capital to, to implement some of these programs that we hope will move us forward into a slightly different business model that leads to sustainability, so.
To answer your question, Mr. Tease, I think what we have to do is rearrange our budget. We were, we had to utilize our seed money to get some consultation help, to rebrand the historic village, to at least start to create awareness that we were open, and to buy some signage and supplies that we had never bought before. What we want to do with the money this year is focus it in three areas. Number one, on more effective marketing. Number two, on better volunteer coordination. We have volunteer resources, but to be honest, we're frustrated because we don't have the, the people to train, place, evaluate, and continue to recruit. It takes time and people to manage volunteers, and so we believe we can be more efficient if we put some resources into really good concerted volunteer management. We also need to put some money into resource development. In other words, building our relationships within the community so that we can develop more sponsorships, develop and expand our donor base, and continue to do effective grant outreach wherever possible. So those are the three areas that we need to focus. I am also concerned that we are over-relying on a few volunteers who, as I said, are literally working thirty-five hours a week, and we have to find a way of spreading that work around so that we don't burn out these very hard-working souls. That is unsustainable, and in some respects, that is our financial management. Does that answer your question, sir? Okay.
Just to give Mr. Zurleg some comfort here, while I may not agree, may not be wholly sold on this yet, I'm still processing it, I would not vote against this budget because this fifty or seventy-five thousand, if that were the sole item, you would have my vote, but I'm still not, still have some issues with this. I want to see the rest of the budget play out, but I would not hold this budget hostage because the museum is getting seventy-five thousand. I still want to process the rest of the budget.
Thank you.
Okay?
I think processing the rest of the budget is the next step, because it'd be seventy-five thousand in this line item, but there are other priorities, I think, at the council table that we need to consider. I mean, can't trade, can't create more dollars.
Can we put this decision off until next week?
I thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The answer is yes, and we have a wrap-up coming in as well, and this may not be the only issue that we have to discuss, so the answer is yes.
Mr. Darling?
Well, it looks like you guys get the dollar fifty for hours. Okay. With special revenue funds, again, the city has seven special revenue funds, the community development block grant fund, local street fund, major street fund, the budget stabilization fund, the rough-use and recycling fund, the li, the new library fund, and the new drug forfeiture fund. Tonight, we're going to talk about the first four, and then next week, we're going to talk about the library and drug forfeiture fund, because I'll have time to put together the presentation for those. Okay, let's go ahead and talk about the CDBG fund, again, the community development block grant fund. This is an expenditure reimbursement-type fund. In other words, the fund balance is always zero. The idea is you spend the money, they reimburse you with federal funds up to the amount of those expenditures, so typically, revenue equal expenditures. As we can see, and we talked about last week, right, in our redirection towards the drain funds, the council did, that the major focus for two thousand thirteen is going to be on the Section Thirty-Six storm sewer project. Again, we can see our total federal grants are budgeted to be six hundred and six thousand dollars to match our budgeted expenditures in the same amount. Next, let's talk about local streets. Local streets and really major streets, when we come up to that, are both funded through our state Public Act fifty-one money, i.e. our gas and weight taxes. As such, we typically budget the revenues that we anticipate to get from those to the expenditures that will be expended for our road maintenance, snow plowing, traffic signs. Am I missing anything?
Gravel roads.
Gravel roads.
Guardrails.
Guardrails.
Storm.
Again, in, right, in snow and ice.
Yeah.
Okay. Again, we're showing a slight increase in revenues from two thousand twelve to about one point seven million dollars. Again, the operating transfer out is to the general fund because all the expenditure Again, the operating transfer out is to the general fund because all the expenditures are budgeted in the general fund for major and local streets. In other words, the operating transfer out is exactly the amount that's budgeted for expenditures for major, for local streets in the general fund. Next, we have major streets. Again, we're budgeting about $3,365,000. Of that, expenditures being absorbed in the general fund are $1.8 million. We are going to transfer, we're budgeting to transfer $313,000 of our major street money into our local street funds. We're allowed to do that by law, and typically, we don't get funded for local streets, so we use anything that we can to try and subsidize our local street fund. Also included is capital, a transfer to capital of about $1.2 million. As you know, in your budget, our capital for road construction is like around $3.8 million, and so, it'll help subsidize that capital project fund, at least $1.2 million that we can use to help build and maintain our infrastructure for major streets. Again, let's talk about Public Act 51 revenue. As again, I told you, both major and local street, as to major funding source, and that is why they are special revenue funds, is because you can only expend that money for major and local streets. Again, we look, it's steadily been declining over the last several years, it's kind of leveled out the last two or three years. Again, we budgeted conservatively, but it's a budget. We're not sure what we'll get, what to do at the state. Sometimes, we do get a reduction over a slow point in time. Obviously, less gas being used, more fuel economy cars are being used, and so, there is the chance that that will reduce even further as we go forward. Next, let's talk about the Budget Stabilization Fund. Again, this fund was established to help subsidize services and stabilize tax millage rates during times of economic decline. Again, in 2011, you had a transfer of $300,000 to the general fund from the Budget Stabilization Fund to help shore that year up. In 2012, you were budgeted to transfer about $300,000 to the general fund that we will not be transferring, we will not be using that. Even though we're budgeted, I don't believe that the general fund needs to use any Budget Stabilization Fund for 2012. And for 2013, we are not budgeting any transfers to the general fund either, at this point. I think we can maintain what we have, the level of services that we have based on the merits of the general fund itself. Okay, Refugees and Recycling. Okay, a little different story here. So, you remember, we were proposing a nine one-hundredths of a mill to that fund. Again, it's primarily because of our decreasing taxable value. However, with that proposed millage, we'd be able to bring in about 4.5 million. Our contractors, as you can see, the expenditures are primarily related to contracts through SACRA. And that's the Southeast Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority, which is a group of how many municipalities?
Fourteen?
No.
Thirteen?
As you can see, we've had, because inside these contracts, there is a CPI index increase and a fuel increase multiplier, that these contracts have gone up basically about $200,000 budgeted for 2013. Again, there's additional costs because of tax refunds I have budgeted in here of about $88,000. So, again, those MTTs would affect all funds as they get charged back. So, as you can see, we are still budgeting a slight, really, increase, if you would, in fund balance with expenditures of $4,482,000, expenditures of $4,425,000. And the next slide's going to tell you, well, Tom, why are you doing that? Because the Refugees Fund is in a critical situation. As we've gone before, the red line are your expenditures, the blue line are your revenues, and we can see a long line of expenditures exceeding our revenue base. As a point in fact, then, the green line, whoops, that's why you get the saying, the green line is our fund balance. And it steadily declined from about $1.5 million, which would be adequate, in 2003, down to basically zero. I'm projecting at the end of 2012, I may be coming to you with a budget amendment for 2012 before it's done. But my projection's about $2,000, which is basically nothing. The budget that I'm presenting for you for 2013 would actually, again, start, increase the fund balance by about $56,000, which is still critical, but the idea is to steadily and consistently try to bring that up to at least the 10% level, which is this purple line here, to try to bring it up with that kind of fund balance level, about 10% of your annual expenditures are, again, about $400,000. But obviously, I'm not budgeting to do that all in one year. I'm trying to budget that to be a slow and consistent reversal of our past trend. Next, again, the Refugees and Recycling Millage Rates. Again, back in 96, it was about 1.2 mills, and it's steadily decreased over the years. There's a significant decrease, I believe, at 2008, seven? Again, and then, over the last few years, because, again, because of the decrease in taxable value and the increase of the contractors' fees, we've slowly had to increase these millage rates to, again, to the proposed rate of about 1.05 mills, or an increase of nine one-hundredths of a mill.
Tom, could I interject just a second?
Yes.
If you look back at 2007, eight, something happened back then is that each of the communities used to have their own refuge contract. We came together with SACRA and put together a contract for everybody. We were able to realize an 18% reduction in cost for the City of Troy at that point. So, that's a significant point in history for us. And as Tom mentioned, what we're looking at these increases, much of that increase is fuel costs. The indicators for this year were 15%. Not 15%, on the total contracts, the City of Troy, when we went out and got a contract from Tringalli, which is our vendor, 95% I believe is based on the collection cost, and their fuel cost portion was just 5%. So, it's 15% on that 5%. We're lucky they didn't ask for 8% or 10% on that, as some of the other contractors did, because that, we'd see significant increases. But to my point, back in 2007, that was because of an 18% reduction in our cost for refuge collection.
Again, talking about the average residential property taxes, then, based on the proposed 1.05 mills for that property that we talked about, about was it $97,776? Based on that taxable value, for the refuge, it would be $103 a year. Now, I'm not sure if any of you have your own private collector to come out and take that. I have in prior lives, and I remember it was about $50 a quarter, so about $200 a year. So, this is significantly less, in my belief at least, from around where I live, yes, that would be significantly more if you contracted that out, and maybe somebody else also has that same experience. See a lot of nods. So, what a bargain. Next, we're going to talk about Internal Service Funds. Again, the city has, before we go, are there any questions on special revenue funds other than the Library and Drug Forfeiture?
We're not going back there. This Refugees Fund.
Yes.
Who audits that? How do we get the numbers to know exactly what the costs are? Is it audited every year?
Well, that would be a good question.
SACRA has an audit firm that comes in audit, and we get both records.
Yeah, let's make sure, because I used to audit SACRA, okay? We're auditing SACRA, not the vendors. However, I mean, the vendors' invoices are negotiated through SACRA.
Yeah, and we look at those counts, based on rate and the number of collections that we have, households. And we look and audit those numbers and add to that. Anytime we have a new house built, or if we have homes torn down, we reduce that, and we look at those numbers.
Yeah, SACRA does have an audit done annually. Internal Service Funds, the city has six internal service funds. Building Operations, which is in charge of basically all the maintenance and operations of all the city's buildings, correct? Information Technology, which is in charge of all the city's IT needs. We have Fleet Maintenance, which is in charge of, again, all the vehicles and equipment used by the city. Compensated Absences, which again counts for basically sick and vacation, leave accrued earned and accrued by our employees. Unemployment Insurance and Workman's Compensation Insurance. Now, the first question is, what is an Internal Service Fund, and why do we have them? Well, the first thing is, these are a way, they're really like, kind of like central services. They provide a service to many funds, many departments with inside the funds. The idea, especially when it comes to like compensated absence on from the Workman's Comp, is to provide a steady level of expenditures. In other words, you don't have big spikes when, just because somebody accrued their vacation doesn't mean they took it, right? So, obviously, if you charge the general fund as they accrue it, it comes to these funds, so when the person takes it, it comes out of that fund, which keeps, again, it's a way to stabilize and budget your other funds accordingly. Same thing with IT and Fleet Maintenance. Obviously, some of those are capital-intensive. We don't want to budget a big spike in the general fund or other funds just because we're buying a, some new vehicle or those type of uses. Basically, we're going to charge those funds as we're using them, so at the end of the day, when it comes time to buy a new vehicle or computer equipment, that we have the funds available in these funds to purchase that type of equipment and provide those type of operations. So, let's first go ahead and talk about Building Ops Fund. Again, the charges that we're looking at charging other departments are down about $6,000 from prior years in 2012. Keep in mind, their revenue is somebody else's expense, right? So, we've actually reduced that by about $6,000 in total for total revenues. Total expenses are budgeted to be about $962,000 as opposed to prior years, which again, is a slight increase compared to what was budgeted last year of about a $41,000 increase to fund balance this year. It's only about $9,000. Again, they will be used as we incur maintenance costs. Some years are higher than others. Again, the idea is to provide stability to the other funds. IT, charges for IT, again, there's two ways that we can look at this, and I want to present both ways because they're a full accrual fund. So, when I'm, this is a cash analysis of what's happening with the IT fund. In other words, what I want to show you is, how much are we going to spend for capital outlay? Because when it comes to the accounting for this fund, expenditures for capital outlay is not an expense, it's an investment into capital assets. Same thing with depreciation. Depreciation is an expense to this type of fund, however, it's not a cash outlay. So, I'm going to show you, I'm going to present both types for you. So, for the economic and accounting geeks, you'll like the net cash flow, or the net asset flow. For others, the cash flow analysis would make more sense, because that's how we budget our other funds. Okay? So, charges for services, again, about $1,569,000 for 2012. We're budgeting about $1.7 million for this year. All that $1.7 million, keep in mind, it is a transfer in of $181,500. In other words, we're budgeting to use ITs, if you would, if they had a fund balance of $181,500. So, you know, all in all, we're having less revenues than we did in prior years, okay? Operating outflows, again, for operations, is about $1.7 million. We're budgeting, again, $181,500,000 for capital outlay, which, again, is trying to say, hey, look, we're using fund balance to fund capital outlay for this year. Okay? So, the net cash effect, basically what we're doing is we're giving IT a haircut. We're cutting their, their spendable resources at the end of the year are expected to go down about $173,000. Those are net financial outflows, okay? Again, kind of a cash basis-type thing. Okay, now, where you have capital outlay in this model, the next model, which is an analysis of net assets, replaces capital outlay with depreciation. In other words, now, we're trying to look at what is the real cost, what is the real economic cost of providing the services for this fund. Again, our inflows are about $1.7 million. Of that, $181,000 is going to be the use of cash assets, if you would. Operating expenses before depreciation was $1.7 million, we're expecting depreciation expensive about $65,000. Therefore, total expenses were about $1.8 million, or a decrease in the net assets of about $56,000. Okay? So, remember, it was $181,000 for capital, right? Of that, so we're really going to be investing that part back in, because the depreciation's only going to be about $65,000. So, that's kind of a net difference in those two, and that's why you see the 170 versus the 56 in this model. Complicated? Okay. Okay. Again, I wanted to try and give you both views from an economic view, because this is a full accrual fund, and a cash analysis, really, what are we budgeting for outlays? And for the capital expenditures, expenditures, Gertz budgeted an upgrade for the Liberty Net Document Management software upgrade of $86,000. The exchange software, which is basically an email system of $90,000, and a sand switch, which-
It's a piece of equipment that will just build in some additional redundancy into our virtual environment. Just another switch that one just like-
So, in other words, we want redundancy built into the system when it comes to the operations of it, so that-
One switch doesn't take us all down.
Right.
Okay, very good.
Kind of like a space shuttle-type. Okay, so, let's go through that same exercise, then, with Fleet Maintenance. Again, because it is a capital-intensive program. First, we're going to look at cash flows. Charges, total revenues are expected to come down about half a million dollars from 4.2 to 3.8. Of that, our operating cash flows before capital are expected to be about 3.5 million, which is over $180,000 reduction from what was budgeted in the prior year. Capital outlay, it was significantly reduced, though, from about $1.5 million in 2012 to just over $900,000 budgeted for 2013. Again, at the end of the day, for cash, 2012 was budgeted to reduce cash by about $890,000. Our 2013 budget's going to, is budgeted to reduce it by $654,000. Again, it's another haircut, if you would, to Fleet Maintenance and their available spendable resources for that. If I was going to look at it from, what were their, first, we'll look at it from the net assets level, again, it's- It's very similar, except capital outlay is now replaced by depreciation. As you can see, what we're going to do in capital outlay is very close to what we're depreciating, so therefore, not only from an economic or net asset basis, but a cash flow basis, will be a reduction in cash and net assets of about 630,000, and that's what's budgeted. Again, they have the ability to do it for the short term and it helps stabilize them the general fund budget.
Are other revenues essentially the clients that we in-source? Or more generally, have those that...
Well, that's an excellent question. Sam?
No, Sam.
Oh, Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
That's basically what we're looking for as we in-source and charge to the other communities and school district that we do the service for, and optimizes our floor space. And labor costs.
Tom?
Yeah.
You said this is a short, I'm looking at slide number 73, the fleet maintenance fund net asset analysis. You said it's a short-term change that we can do, or am I incorrect?
So we're looking at the change in net assets, right? So we're budgeting to reduce, at the end of the day, fleet maintenance net assets by about 630,000. Both either whether we do it the economic way or from a cash flow analysis that we looked at before, because they were both about 900,000, is basically the same result. Yes, we can't continue to do this on forever if that's your question, but for right now, we're trimming around the ears a little bit and, if you will, from accounting standpoint.
Is that a one or two-year thing? I mean, I think when we do a three-year budget, we plan for three years. Do we, you know, have to pay the piper in year two or year three?
Well, again, when it comes, these are full accrual type funds and we don't budget those for three years. These are not part of your three-year budget. Your three-year budget's going to be the general fund. Funds that are supported by property taxes, those are your, they're, what they're called governmental type funds. Those are the funds that were legally required, A, to adopt a budget for, A. B, those are the funds that we want to look out in a three-year projection because these type of funds are supported by service charges, in essence.
That said, we do have a forecast, we're rolling stock that we buy in the future. I think Sam knows when we buy for starters, we know when we're buying, we're rolling stock, we're going to, it's quite a...
I don't personally, but we knew our staff tracks all of that and we have projections on every piece of equipment and anything that they charge for.
Okay, compensated absence fund. Again, the next three funds that we talked about, compensated absences, unemployment, and workman's comp are all basically run the same way as an employee, in this case, accrue sick or vacation. The department is charged for the value of that, which is a charge to that fund or that department. It comes over basically as a revenue to this side so that when that employee embarks on taking that so-called earned sick or vacation, it's not a spike in the general fund, it's paid for out of these particular funds. That includes unemployment and workers' comp. Again, these are basically zero budgeted funds. This is the revenue that was being charged to other funds, or expenditures to other funds, which is revenue to this fund, about 2.9 million. And of course, then we budget accordingly that everybody would use that in that particular Same thing with unemployment insurance. Now, you notice unemployment went up significantly this year. I think our rate went from about 3.2% to about 8.19% last year due to the layoffs and attrition as we downsized. And finally, the workman's comp fund. Again, revenue is equal expenditures, and that's estimated about 334,000 for 2013. Any questions on internal service funds?
I'm looking at the budget detail in page 243. The compensated absence fund, and just to clarify here, the revenue totals for 2012 estimated were $3,399,000, as you showed there, but the expenditure totals were $4,333,000. So, we've got $934,000 variance there, negative expenditures exceeding revenue. Just trying to understand that.
Page 243?
Page 243.
Okay, that's, oh, yeah. Yes, you can see for 2012, we're estimating that we're going to be using, in this case, net assets of about 933,000, right? And this is exactly a great point of talking about the timing differences. And if we transferred these big swings of 993,000 to the general fund, that would certainly be a lot harder to budget, wouldn't it? Because we can't, we can't tell when an employee's going to take their sick or vacation. As you notice, in 2010, we actually had a surplus of 600,000. 2011 of 139,000. Well, 2012 looks like they are going to, at least we're estimating that they are going to use their sick or vacation.
Absolutely. I wonder if the E-RIP was a function of that, when a lot of folks left?
I'm estimating...
Yeah, just, sorry about the start of our conversation. We had early retirement center program, called the E-RIP, and so a lot of folks took advantage and left and then were paid when they left. Those are the same folks that would have been laid off essentially this coming year. And again, when we determined the economic functionality of the E-RIP program, we showed our methodology to the auditing firm and over a five-year time horizon, it was more cost efficient and effective, looking at all these costs to have an E-RIP program as
Next, let's talk about our debt service funds. Again, our proposed tax rate is seven tenths of a mil, which is up two tenths of a mil from prior years. It's basically the general fund debt service. It does, within side general fund debt services, you have the 2,000 MTF bonds. However, we are not funding the MTF bonds through this millage. We are only funding the ABC debt service bonds that were voter approved through a millage in 1999. Also in here, I have a schedule of principal and interest payments for all funds, all of our debt, because it's not just general debt, and also projected millage rates for our general debt fund. Okay, let's go ahead and...
Can you just briefly go through the MTF bond, the ABC, I think I know what that, those bonds are, but can you just...
Sure.
Quick, 20-second summary?
The MTF bond was a bond that we used to restructure part of Rochester Road. It was part of really the DDA's plan, part of their proposed plan. And as such, it's been funded through the DDA up to date. Does that help? And again, it's the intersection of Big Beaver and Rochester Road.
I want to ask Steve, identify that.
I really can't address that, the lending aspect of the money.
It's the ISO 5, it's the ISO 5 to the Torren project. A portion of that lied within the DDA. We received, it was a high priority project funding, and then over six years, we bid that project and started it. The first two years, we got the, following four years in overtime, so those bonds paid for the difference between the two years and the end of the six years.
What was the project scope?
Why did we reconstruct to a sick lane border?
That was the first phase of Rochester between ISO 5 and 99. So the bonds were, were essentially going from a four-lane highway with the center left turn lane, which is called a suicide lane because cars could compete to turn left, to a six-lane boulevard where you actually have left turns through a boulevard and you can queue, so all your left turns are interrupted at that point. And that was for the construction department.
So all the...
And right away as well. Now, for the rest of council, you want to explain what A, B, and C was? Do you know that?
I don't know what A, B, C was. I think C was the road.
Big Beaver?
No, it was multiple projects.
Community center.
One of them was the road, and that was A, B, or C.
It was public safety too, the police department addition, you know, the new building for the police. It was a renovation of this structure. The consultants that tear the building down, we didn't have that much money to tear it down, so we renovated this building. So it's the police, and it was the police and fire training center on John R., and it was multiple road projects.
Fire station.
Fire station three, absolutely, I'm sorry, no. So, yeah, all those things were three separate bond issues, and the reason for the bond being put forward was we were paying off the debt that we had outstanding, so they placed the issue on in front of voters because we could borrow that much money with no change in the millage rate. That's basically what it was.
Page 133 has an operational definition of all of those bonds. Very good you know your facts, by the way.
32 years, seven months, or what?
Center of the page.
Perfect. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, so going forward, again, we're budgeting revenues, again, with our proposed millage rate to, again, to get revenues about 3,162,000. We have expenditures in the same amount. Again, it's, the idea is to generate enough to pay for our required debt service. As you can see here, even with the increase in millage rate, we will still be using fund balance of 172,720 to meet our debt service requirements. Okay? Just for some perspective, in 2010, we had expenditures in excess of revenues of 475,000. 2011, expenditures ahead of revenues of 826,000. 2012, we're estimating that we'll be reducing fund balance by another 978,000. Again, right now, another 173,000 for 2013. That bring our fund balance basically for debt service about 1.6 million dollars, which again, when it comes to a debt service fund, it should be a little higher than a regular general fund because of your, the timing of when your principal and interest payments come due and the timing of when you levy your taxes. Again, it all gets paid out at the end of the day when the debt comes due, so we'll never be leveraging any more debt than what's going to be required to pay the debt off. Next, okay, here's the 2,000 MTF debt service. Again, the debt service for this is 251,320 for 2013. Again, the transfer in from the DDA to pay for the debt service of 251,320. And again, in the statements, you do have to break down the principal and interest. Proposal A is 886,370. Proposal B is 1,417,000. Proposal C is 746,000. Again, they all go into the debt service fund and then transferred out into these specific funds for A, B, C, and the F fund. We look at what we're going to project our millage rates to be based on, again, taxable value, and again, these are, we're required to make these debt service payments. So as it stands, right now, 2013, again, we're proposing a 0.70 mil increase for '14 and '15. It looks like it's going to go up five one-hundredths of a mil and then kind of increasing from there, because we do have different debt service schedules, sometimes more principal is required in some of the later years, but then coming down basically by 2022 to, back to 0.75. Again, they may change as we go forward depending on what tax we're adding. We will just accordingly. Any questions on the debt service fund? Okay, what comes up next? April 27th. First of all, we'll talk about the library and the drug forfeiture special revenue fund, but then we'll segue right into enterprise funds, capital project funds, the three-year budget, hopefully any wrap-up that we need to do so that we're ready, and all on the same page come May 7th for the public hearing and adoption of the budget. Final note to leave you is that, based on your past practices, the city of Troy has a AAA bond rating, one of the very few in the state, and again, it comes from many years of good sound financial management, and hoping that this year is no exception. I want to thank you very much for your time, especially staff, thank you very much. Monica O'Roland and Beth Tassnet for helping put this together, and of course, your leadership and guidance.
Mr. Dyer, Mr. Zerlik, I have a couple of general questions based on my review of this budget summary. On page 23, the expenditure comparison, all funds, in the 2012 estimate, it's 122.8 mil. And, but then, on the total city budget on the financial organizational chart, it's 131.8. And so, in other words, if you think that you can run the city on 122.8, why are we budgeting for 131.8?
Okay, let me try and catch up with you. On page 23?
Page 23, the 2012 estimated is 122.8 mil.
Correct.
And then, on the organizational chart, the total city budget is 131.8.
Correct. Again, the biggest thing is that 2012, those estimates are based on actuals, right? So just because we budget a position doesn't mean that we filled it yet, we've had a lot of layover, we had a lot of turnover during the year. Again, the estimate is based on what I think we're going to come in at the end of the year, it's not part of the financial plan.